To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The answer is here, so Amador had a pre-engagement tonight, so he could not make it. At this time, I will have Mr. Carpenter here to recognize the AOK Awards.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Halleck. So the AOK Awards that I have, the participants are not here, though, but I would like to recognize members of my student council at GRM. And so I would like Liliana, Gavin, and Abby to please stand up. So student council at GRM is a commitment. Many times, we meet approximately once or twice a month on Fridays. They have to give up their lunch with their peers. At times, they have to give up their recess. But it's a great opportunity for me to get the student voice and what's needed in the school. So for example, this year, one of the things we're working on is bringing a tetherball court to GRM, just like they have at Circle Park. And so the great thing about the tetherball court is they come up with the plan. We bring in like Mr. Dorcas or Mr. Norris, and they'll tell us what they need from them. We'll talk about supplies, we'll talk about price, and so they get to go through a process of how difficult or easy some things are to bring to a school, right? Because they all have great ideas, right? Strawberry milk's always a big idea that they want to bring back, but then they have to realize that there's laws from New York State that don't allow that, right? And so they really get that process, which is great. And they also, students now know, we started the student council now for our third year, and students know that they can go to student council members because they'll have my ear. And so when we meet, they tell me, you know, what's going on, what they feel could improve the student experience, and that's what we're doing here. So I would just want to congratulate you guys for the hard work this year, and thank you for everything that you do. I know taking recess and lunch sometimes is a good thing, but many times it's not, and I appreciate that. There's no other time in the day I don't want to pull you out of, you know, ELA or math or science. So I have Abby Carney, Liliana, and Gavin that I'm going to give a certificate to. Another great idea the student council came up with last year is that they ask the PT every year to donate a tree that gets planted for that sixth grade. And so we started that last year, and so we hope, you know, in 20 years, we'll have 20 new trees.
Wow.
Each year, which is great. And they're responsible to maintain up these trees. So it's just wonderful. I cannot thank you guys enough for your hard work. There's also, the other thing is they have to maintain good academic standing, can't get in trouble, and so they are just great kids to help me again with the student voice in the school.
You've got two AOK Awards.
Yeah, but they're not.
They're not.
Yep. So, thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Okay, if you guys would like to leave, I always say, if you want to stay here and be bored, stay here. If you want to leave, you will not insult us.
I'm going to take you up in that office.
Yeah, I know you are. Okay, at this time, Mr. Keeler, budget hearing, present presentation.
Okay. So the budget remains largely unchanged since March. What we had predicted would happen through the state ended up happening pretty much exactly as we had planned. So I'm just going to go through an overview of what we had had, and then give you the newest information we have on the taxes, which is generally favorable. So this is just our district strategic objectives. They haven't changed. We want to continue to support our growth. We want to invest heavily in our professional development program, which we have been doing. We spend just shy of $200,000 a year on professional development all around. Now, that's for everybody. So that comes out to about $2,000 per employee if you include non-teachers in there. And that money does include non-teachers as well. We have the new 811 program. We're going to continue the clubs, and we have the college program going strong. Our revenue budget stays the same. It's $19,815,851. That's 306,000 more than last year. $538,733 is what we're going to increase taxes by. That's 4.29%. I'm going to get to that point in a second, though, because we had a lot of new properties enter the tax rolls this year, which is going to really offset that number big time. State aid is going down by 242,000, and it's pretty flat over the last four years. We haven't gotten any additional state aid in over four years. The other revenue, that's things like interest, BOSI's refunds, things of that nature. That's largely staying the same as well. And then the use of reserves, that's money that we have set aside. That gets used. That's compensated absences and things like that. So when someone retires and they get paid out for vacation and things like that, I leave that as a flat 100 because you never know who's going to retire, who's not. And so I leave that as kind of a running number on our budget. But when you see that, that's for things like that, for when retirement's happening, and we use our reserves to pay out that final payment. School tax rates, while the tax levy increase is 4.29%, I'm only estimating that it's going to impact by 0.6%. Those are what the tax rates are using the most recent assessments. So I'm expecting, for instance, the town of Highland to go up 10 cents per $1,000. I'm thinking that on a $200,000 house, you might see $19.68 a year of an increase because there are so many new properties. $35 million in new properties, to be exact. That is the pipelines, and then some of the larger houses that are going to chape in estates, and I believe there's another residence in Highland where they're building some expensive houses. And that's really helped soften the blow of any kind of going to the cap. That makes up 66% of our revenue. State aid is an increasingly smaller share of our revenue every year. Just two years ago, state aid was 33%. It's going down by 1% or 2% every year. So I just want to point that out because we're going to the cap for a reason. But luckily, the new properties are going to help offset that. This is our tax levy cap, which we've gone through. That's how that's calculated. It's mostly through our exclusions that that's going up. The pilots, 147,500, when one comes off, it goes in. Otherwise, it's 2.8%. The additional money is the pilots and any increase in debt. This is a requirement by the state for me to show you in a three-part budget. I'd like to explain how this kind of works on the three-part budget, because this year, it looks a little funky. It looks like we got rid of $500,000 in capital and added it to administration. Here's how they make me do this. This is a state-required thing at the budget hearing. So we had one administrator who we were paying on a grant is coming off the grant. They make me allocate employee benefits based on total salaries, not actual benefits. So if administrative salaries are 13%, and it goes up to 15% of my salaries, I have to move that much in benefits over to it. So that's $190,000 in additional benefits went over into the administrative line, and that's why that went up so much. We did not hire any additional administrators. Our administrative budget isn't actually going up that wild, and we're not non-investing in capital either. It was just a shift in how the salaries went. It's all in employee benefits. And actually, on the website, we have a budget statement that's available, and if anybody wants to request. I didn't print up a ton of them because they're 136 pages long. But you can see these broken out in extreme detail, and you'll see that it's all in employee benefits. It's just how the state forces you to allocate it. But there is not that big of a shift.
Timeout.
Yep.
Take five.
Sure.
Mr. Carpenter here.
I saw Matt with his mother in the parking lot, so I turned around really quick. I have his AOK Award. I hope you don't mind.
No, go for it. No, go ahead.
So occasionally at GRM, we have spills. We have water that spills, we have soda that spills. Sometimes we clean some water by, and sometimes we clean the bathroom without asking or thinking, really. Goes to the bathroom in the lobby, grabs paper towels, and comes back and helps the students clean up the mess. And so that's something that we really try to push. So Matt, come on up. I think you'll get your AOK Award. Everybody in the school has AOK Awards.
Five minutes late is not a bad thing. You run around here. We want to make sure you get home safe and get back here in the morning.
No, it's fine.
Nothing over 55. Go ahead, Caleb. I'm sorry.
Is he, he's on his way home?
Did the class, but.
Oh, okay. Okay. So this is kind of the breakdown of how we have our expenditures. This is a better idea of that. So general support is where all our administrators are. When you don't break it down in the odd way that the state makes you do it, it's going up 3.23%. So it's, it was just a really weird way, and the way they make me allocate employee benefits on that particular slide. But it's by law required to be part of this presentation. This is a more realistic idea of what we're going to spend and where the increases are. Transportation is barely going to go up. Instruction is going to go up 3%. General support, 3%. Employee benefits, 4%. The overall budget is going up 1.57%. That's because of the capital portion. That's not, we're paying a lot less in debt. A reduction in force. I did change this a little bit from the original plan, speaking with Tracy today. So if this budget passes, this is what's included. It is one bus monitor, three part-time cafeteria, the one maintenance and science teacher. Those are positions that people are actually already put their retirements in for, one tech support staff, and one teacher's aide. So the teaching assistant is, if this budget passes, that's not included in here. So the teaching assistant is part of this budget. So that was one position that we added back into the budget since March. Again, working on all of these cost savings, we're still getting information, and we get information through the rest of the year. We're still working on, actually got some good insurance information. We're going to have a lower insurance rate on student accident insurance. But we're working on renegotiating any contract we can, getting anything we can through BOSI's. And actually, we had a meeting today where Scott Krebs went through all of the softwares we're using, and we're looking to get rid of three softwares that altogether will cost somewhere around $8,000. So we're just trying to make sure we're being, you know, smart with our money. Again, the state aid outlook. The governor's still hoping to make cuts at some point, so that's just something to be aware of. They are currently looking to recalculate how they formulate foundation aid, which hopefully will be less detrimental to us. Right now, how they calculate your income wealth is they take the total income in the district and divide it by the number of students. That's, which is a weird way to calculate wealth in a district, because if 10 students leave the district, everybody is not wealthier. So that's one of the areas that we get hit on, that I'm hoping the state reformulates. And so hopefully, this one is a more generous foundation aid formula than the one she was suggesting we go to last year. But there'll be a lot of lobbying, and I'm sure me and Tracy and probably Scott will be up in Albany at some point in the next year.
I'll drive.
Arguing with how they're going to calculate this. And I would suggest you guys do too, and call your unions and all that kind of stuff to kind of get your piece in on how the foundation aid gets formulated. Because right now, if we use the actual foundation aid that they have right now, the way they calculate it today, we would lose $1.2 million, which is a significant sum for a small school like this. So that's going to be a fight for the next year. It's just something to keep on the outlook. It's not affecting us this year. But the governor has not walked back her desire to go to that formula, and is going to try to fight for it next year. This is just to show the state aid is, in 2021, I was getting 5.9 million, and 2425, I'm getting 5.8. It's just flat. It's just not going up or down or otherwise. So unfortunately, the other chunk of our money is the tax cap, and that's why we have to go to that. If anybody has any questions on the budget, I'm happy to answer. We've got a copy of it here. There's a copy on the website. If you call us, we're always happy to sit down and talk about it. If anybody has any questions about what's going into it. I was pretty happy with how the tax rates came out with the new properties. That was very good to see. And I think this keeps a lot of our stuff intact and keeps us fiscally responsible, let us stay nimble so that we can navigate whatever's going to come up.
Thank you, Caleb. Any public comment on the budget hearing? Board President will review the meeting rules of order and qualifications of voters. A, during the public comment portion of this meeting, each speaker should identify him or herself and state their town of residence. Speakers need to be acknowledged prior to speaking. Questions must be pertaining to the proposition. One question at a time per person. The president of the board reserves the right to close discussions. At this time, the business official will answer any questions. I already asked, so I'm kind of late on that. All right, very good. Moving on to the superintendent's report.
All right. So Caleb and I have been very, very busy. The capital bond project is kicking off next week. So Voice Excavating will begin moving in their equipment and setting up their staging area for the athletic facilities. We have a kickoff meeting on April, no April, May 14th of next week. We are moving forward with the all-weather turf for the football, soccer, and baseball infield. Our goal is to be complete with the project in the fall. We are behind schedule just because, thank you, state, and their approval process. You know, just a reminder to all our taxpayers, this bond project, which was approved in December 22, is tax neutral. Does not raise nor lower your taxes. It is tax neutral. So I've been fielding a couple of questions regarding, you know, the increase, the 2%, and I just keep reminding people, we also put in our budget newsletter, this does not increase your taxes. It is tax neutral. Workplace violence prevention program, that came down starting in January, so it used to be all municipalities and towns and private businesses. Like, basically, everybody had to have workplace violence prevention programs, plans in place, except for schools. They added us. So that is now complete. The plan is complete. It will be added to our district-wide safety plan. The staff has been sent the program and the training, the plan and the training. It is posted in several places in the schools. Website now has been updated with this new information. And then, starting, you know, next year, it will become part of our annual compliance training. We just have to do that according to the state. I did have a superintendent's council meeting last week, and the county superintendents had a discussion with Dr. DeFor regarding our concerns concerning special education programs for the 24 and 25 school year. It was a productive discussion, and this came after the fact that not every district voted to approve the BOSI's budget. So the question was raised, what are you, you know, what are you doing for? So it was a productive discussion. Several solutions were offered in order to help SC BOSI's alleviate some of their spacing issues, possible staffing issues, and also, Dr. DeFor, you know, one of the suggestions, and so I opened up to the board, you know, if we would like Dr. DeFor to come and do a presentation in the fall of what, you know, the VOTEC program, the CTEC program is like, what special ed programs, he is more than willing to come, just to make sure we are informed on what BOSI's does for us, and why it's important for that partnership. So I do have that as well. Our budget newsletters will be going out tomorrow. Those are ready to go. Lisa, thank you for all the copying and the folding. She did a great job with the design and all the information, so I appreciate her help with that. And then last night, we went to the Mid Hudson School Study Council and to celebrate Amador and Beth regarding their continuous work for our district. We celebrated their achievements. It was a great night, and I appreciate everything they do for the district. So that concludes my report.
So two things to piggyback on your report. One is, the bond is definitely tax neutral. There was a bond that came off, and we're putting another bond back on. We wanted to get more money, but we couldn't because of the interest rate, correct?
No, it was the, again, and I hate to beat a dead horse, but our state aid. So the last bond project we did 15 years ago, we used to get 54% building aid.
But what was the bond? I don't want to go through it. But what was it? Was it $15 million bond or $14 million bond?
So it was 15, but we were only able to do 12, 7, 30.
And that's because we didn't want to raise taxes.
Correct.
So that's why we did what we did. So this is a tax-neutral thing. The other thing I wanted to piggyback, oh, with starting in the fall is for sports. I don't foresee it happening, to be very honest with you, because we're two to three months behind because of, we were hoping to load up the front end of the baseball, or I'm sorry, the soccer and the football, and then have the home games at the end.
Yes.
But I'm being very, I don't think that's going to happen. I don't want to get people's, people's get their hopes up. So it's just because it's just getting delayed. Any questions for Tracy on her report?
Is there going to be an alternate solution for kids that want to play those fall sports? Do they get to play them in a different district since we don't have?
No, we would just do away games. We would still have sports.
Different districts.
It would be away games, not home games.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. Is McKenzie's school a legal soccer field?
We have them modified there.
Yeah, I think we can do the soccer.
We can do soccer. We've already, that's, we do have Plan B and C and D for fall sports.
Not for football, though.
Not for football. We're working on that.
All right. Very good. Moving on, secondary principal report.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you. So a lot of busy season right now, May and June. So we're amping it up here. A lot of things going on. Last Friday, we were very busy at the junior senior high school. We, our grades 9 through 12, did the Save a Life Tour, which threw the company Matrix. So they came in. It's about distracted driving. Talked about, you know, drunk driving, driving while impaired, texting while driving. It was actually pretty interesting. They had a, right where you're sitting, a couple simulators set up, and they would hand the cell phone to the kid about 30 seconds in, and as soon as they started texting, it was, you know, not good. So I really hammered home what we were trying to do before prom, which we did have our prom, which was on Saturday. And we had the prom out here, which was great. And then prom was at the River View. There's a River View in, there's a lot of River Views in Mattamores, turns out. So, but it was great. Well-attended and a very safe night for everybody. So I was very happy with that. I had a lot of fun. I did some dancing as well, which was awesome, you know, cut and ruck. So, third marking period. Also, last Friday, we had the third marking period Student Recognition Assembly, honoring our kids, you know, our shining stars, our principals' list, honor roll, high honor roll, all that good stuff. So it was great. Friday was a busy day, but it was awesome. Celebrate the kids. Teacher Appreciation Week. I just want to say, you know, thank you to all of our teachers and including our staff. This was Teacher Appreciation Week. The goal of kind of the PTSA, when I started with Mrs. Dearman last year, was to kind of take Teacher Appreciation Week to the next level, and we were able to do that this year with a luncheon at the junior senior high school. There was no, so that's good. I'm glad. Caleb really liked the mac and cheese. So.
No chicken nuggets?
No, no chicken nuggets. So.
Sorry.
So we had a wonderful luncheon yesterday. A big thank you to the PTSA, especially Beth Dearman, who was instrumental in it. You know, she was working really hard on that, and then I was out on the grill making some burgers and hot dogs. So it was a lot of fun yesterday. So we did some other things this week, but just a big thank you to the JSHS faculty and staff, and all of our teachers and staff in the district as well. Star testing. We had our star testing for kind of our benchmarks. It was third and foul one this school year. We had that on Tuesday. So that's all done. Some important dates coming up. Well, today, our archery team flew to nationals. I'm still waiting. That's why I keep checking my phone for Kelly Pratchett to text me to make sure they made it safe. They flew out there. So we have John Holz, who is one of our eighth graders, competing, and we sent six of our kids out there because they've competed in archery all year. But we wish them luck as they're in Kentucky for a couple days. Yeah, very cool. Good stuff. A couple of them tried to take their Xbox with them, so they're now in my office. So if anybody wants to play Xbox. Let me know. Yeah, one of them really does not look great when you're putting that through security. So. Yeah, Jed, if you want to put a TV in my office tomorrow, that'd be great. Thank you. So May 14th, we have the Grade Eight New York State Science Assessment. This is kind of the first round of this, which is computer-based. I'm not hearing really great things. I'm hearing it's taking all day from people around the state. So we're hoping it doesn't take all day, but it is new for our eighth graders. It's kind of replacing that performance test that they took, but we're all set for that. They will take that on the 14th. May 15th, we're showing Screenagers, which is a documentary kind of about kids and their cell phones and how they're attached to them. Do not interrupt instructional time. We're doing that during lunches. So we're actually going to set it up right in here. We're going to put lunch tables in here, and we're going to watch, they're going to watch. It's about 42 minutes long. So perfect timing for that. We got our license through Sullivan BOSI's to view that. That's also our spring concert date, May 15th. May 16th, we have SUNY-Sullivan One-Stop Admission Night at the junior senior high school. May 17th is our AP Physics Exam. May 21st is our fourth marking period progress report. May 22nd to the 24th is the senior trip to Rehoboth Beach in Delaware, which we're looking forward to. How many seniors do we have going, Angie?
Quite a few.
Quite a few, right? I think it's about.
Quite a few. I think about like 35?
35. I think 35. 35. So I will be making the trip as well. So I'm looking forward to it. May 28th, VOTEC National Honor Society induction. We have four students that are being inducted, actually, three inducted, one getting their cord as it's their second year in there. So I'm looking forward to that. That's at.
Cart, right, I think.
That's the Val Sal. I think that's at.
SUNY-Sullivan.
SUNY-Sullivan Field House, right? Yep. And May 30th, we have our academic awards night. So a lot going on. A lot of good stuff going on. You know, if anybody has an Airbnb, please let me know, okay? But all good stuff for the kids. So very happy. That's it for me.
Any questions for Mr. Conklin from the board? All good. Student report.
We kind of have the same kind of events listed here, so I'm going to give a little overview of it from a student's perspective. The Save Life Tour was very informative, and I'm glad that the students had a chance to actually look at that and feel how that feels. So there were no bad events on prom night. Everyone looked great, danced the night away. It was very nice. And our junior senior high school archery team is on the way to Kentucky, and they've left at around 11:00 a.m. today, and they all look super excited. Senior trip is coming up, May 22nd, 23rd, and I personally am very excited. Go to the beach. Very nice. And tonight, there was also.
Well-watched.
Oh, yeah, that too. And tonight, there was also a signing ceremony for seniors who have committed to playing sports in college. So it was a great time, very nice stuff, a lot of pictures, and congratulations to all those seniors doing that. And that's all I have.
Tell everybody where you're going, Angie.
I will be attending Keystone College and playing soccer for them. So, good job.
Very good.
Thank you.
We have a few seniors going places, right? We got one playing for Hartwick for softball and.
We've got one student going for track for DeSals, DeSals?
DeSals, we first, yeah.
And then Nichols College for baseball.
So it's four now, Calvin and Angie, right?
Four, yep.
Yep.
That's good for, you know, for school our size. I'm proud of that.
Yeah.
I have a nephew who hasn't played at Hartwick. Got a full scholarship for football. He started actually defense. Played all four years. Any questions for Mr. Conklin from the board? All good? All right, I'm sorry, Angie. Sorry, sorry.
I know we look.
I didn't mean to insult you. Very good. Elementary principal, you have a report?
I have a report for them.
Mr. Carpenter here.
We do have, you know, I'm looking at his report, we do have an increase in attendance because they've been developing attendance incentives by different grade levels. So there is an increase of 0.16% from last month. So again, we keep increasing attendance. It's one of those holdovers from COVID where, you know, students don't want to come to school. So we are trying to do some incentives, get them there. McKenzie did pick out, through Leader and Me, a mission statement that's been adopted for students and faculty and staff. That included parent feedback, teacher feedback, students, and that mission statement will be really promoted starting next year. The, they have, the third benchmark comes up, and from MTSS, which is the multi-tiered system of supports, and they will have a data benchmarking meeting in June. They are doing for units of study, intravistations to occur next week. And the intravistations is where teachers get to exchange classrooms and go from one classroom to another. Is that correct, Ms. Council? Y'all are visiting other classrooms?
Yes.
That's how I take intravistations.
Yes, we're going to each of the classrooms, and then we have a full-on AID.
Yes. So it's all within McKenzie's family. Planning date for next year will be on May 16th. There is, in literacy, discussion of the 90-minute ELO block, just discussion. Micro credentialing through SUNY-Newhouse. I have to finish my micro credential in the science of reading. I'm still plugging through it, but I will have that done before their timeline. So, because again, I feel it's important that if I expect my teacher to do it, I should know what I'm talking about. So I am doing the micro credential. State testing, ELA and math testing is complete. Science on May 14th. It's only the fifth grade. Again, this is that new science test. So we're trying to wait and see. It'll be interesting. We have 188 students in 18 different clubs. So again, the elementary clubs are a success. It's awesome. Now, Mr. Sewell, Sewell?
success. It's awesome. Now, Mr. Sol, Sol, he is who is replacing Ms. Wilder. So he is our music replacement. So he's even planning a little June kind of event so that, you know, he can also promote what we've done, since we had to have this concert at Mackenzie so early. Then he's doing like a little June concert just to showcase what the kids have done. So that's going to be in June. I don't have a date yet for that. So that concludes his report.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions?
They're delayed until 9:05 p.m. on the way to Kentucky.
Oh, man. That flying's tough, man. That flying's tough.
There's a storm in Kentucky.
Really?
Correct.
Mr. Krebs, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening. Couple quick things. I don't need to follow up on too many things. Our ENKERN, that's the National Council of Rural Educators, we had a survey that was done for our ninth and 12th graders. We had about 95% of all of our ninth graders and 12th graders take the survey. We'll get information back on that, on how well we're doing preparing our kids from ninth grade to 12th grade. So it's a longitudinal study. So they do a study of our ninth graders, and then three years later, they'll do it again as their 12th graders. So we haven't got there yet. This is our third year. So we'll find out a little bit more. But our 12th graders take it, and they compare us to other rural schools on how we're doing on some select categories. Our elementary school is doing a pilot on two programs. Actually, it's the same company. It's from Explore Learning on Reflex and Fracs Math. They're an online program, and Reflex is talking about number sense. Those are for second, third, and fourth graders. And Fracs Math, about fractions. They're doing it for our third and fourth graders. And Mr. Carpenteri was suggesting that there was some lack of skills in some of our students on number sense and fractions and addition and things like that. So they're looking at if this is an option for us moving forward. So they're doing a pilot from now until the end of the year. It's free. And then if there's some needed surplus in our monies for that, we'll purchase the product for next year. And lastly, I think I had mentioned this, but we have come off of a energy performance contract just recently. And part of the energy performance contract Caleb may have filled you in is where they go and they look at ways in which we can save money as a district on our energy usage. And so we had a conversation with Caleb and Amador. Felenger apparently does some energy performance contract work. And we thought it best maybe to have the board see a couple of other outside providers that would give an overview of what they can provide in services for energy performance contract. So I've reached out to a couple that have done specific ones in the state, and we're looking at possibly if it's okay with you to do it at the August board meeting, or maybe a workshop in August where they can come in, present about their energy performance work, and then we can go from there.
Similar to like what we did with, for hiring engineers for this project?
Because the question was raised with one of them, that 6%. And just to kind of check and see, is that a good percentage, or what's the standard?
And different groups, I had reached out to a couple. So different of them have different experiences in it also, on what their levels are. And I know that the board has looked at things that they can do for transportation and busing and the electric. So a lot of them are starting to have those conversations as an energy performance contract. How do we save energy when we're going on and putting our buses on the road that need electricity? So they're starting to have those conversations about ways to save different districts money. So rather than just go out, it's probably best to kind of cover all of your bases. So if you're thinking about doing something down the line, how do we make sure that what we're doing now will fit into that vision next year or five years from now? So that we're not paying extra money later because we didn't do something five years ago. So that might be a very good conversation to have with those. And waiting until August, we can kind of come up with some questions that we want to ask them and put it out to each one of the groups.
We did some similar on town when I sat on the town board.
Yeah. Okay, so I just need a little feedback. If you want to do it at the August board meeting, or if you want to just have a workshop along those lines, it's really up to you. But as soon as you let me know, I'll kind of put an agenda together if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep. Very good. Any questions?
I have a question. Mr. Krebs, the ninth and 12th grade students?
Yes.
What exactly are they testing them for?
It wasn't a test. It was a survey.
Oh, it was a survey.
It was a survey. They were just asking them about their experiences. Andrew, did you take the survey?
I was aware there was a survey.
Okay.
So it's.
For post-secondary. So what are our kids doing when they leave here?
Yes.
And what are they thinking of doing when they're freshmen? So are they going into the military, the workforce, college?
Two-year, four-year, yeah.
ANDKERN kind of molds that for us, and we break it down and see like, okay, well, what are kids interested in? So it's, I think it's no cost to us, and we've been absolutely wonderful to work with. Yeah, so.
And I don't know, because we don't have a longitudinal yet with our ninth graders to our 12th grade, and they're just comparing our 12th graders to other rural schools. They want to make sure that, yeah, are they being prepared? Are they, do they feel that they're prepared to go into whatever career they're moving into or into whatever college program they're moving into?
Any other questions? Well, good. Thank you, Mr. Krebs. I'll be, I'll be quick. I mean, it's this time of year. I always say it. It's budget time. It's very important that people get out and vote, vote yes, hopefully. Because as I always say, and I'll repeat myself, if you want to vote no, but you don't like me, or you don't like the board, you don't like administration, only people it's going to reflect is the kids. They're the ones that's going to get hurt by no vote. Not going to hurt me. You're going to hurt me because the kids are going to be hurt. You know, I sit up here, you know, I sit up here for the kids and then the faculty and everybody. But it's very important that we get a yes vote. And this board and administration has been very, very trying not to raise taxes. That started when Magano and myself were here working with Caleb, and Stacy was a board of it. The whole board was, but we spent other times dealing with it. Unfortunately, we have to go against the cap this year, which, you know, I'm never comfortable with that. We've always been halfway or so with it. But this year, unfortunately, we have to. But as Caleb presented, it's not going to affect your taxes really by, what'd you say it was? 10 cents?
It should be like 0.6%, so, you know.
Yeah, but on a $100,000 house?
20 bucks.
20 bucks. So a $200,000 house, you're talking 40 bucks for a year. I don't think that's outrageous.
40 bucks or 20 bucks, Caleb, for 200,000?
200 is 20 bucks.
Yeah, 200, 20 bucks.
So it's 40 bucks for a $200,000 house. Your average house is around here, 200, 250, till you get into so many subdivisions where he was talking about, you know, the $35 million ones, you get into Chaping, you get into York Lake, you get into them, then they get up there. But it's, you know, whatever. But it's just important that they come out and vote. And we, like I said, we always try to keep the taxes down to where we can keep it to a minimal. And we'll see what happens. When is it? The 21st, right?
Mm-hmm.
Is the vote? All right. This time, I'll take public comment on the consent agenda items only. All good? Very good. At this time, I will take a motion to approve consent items 501 through 9.06.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Stacy.
I'll second.
Second by Kristen. Any discussion?
Yes.
Two.
I specifically want to point out that one of the motions that we are approving tonight is the Extended School Year Summer Program for the Special Education 811. I think that's a really important thing. We've heard from the members of our community and the parents, and this is a real need, and we've responded, and we're going to do this for them.
That was a, that was a question raised at our special board meeting, right?
Yes, it was.
Yeah. Very good. Any other discussion? Okay, I'll take the vote. Nancy?
Yes.
Kristen?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Yes. All right. Bear with me. The rules of qualifications of voters. The board president or deputy will review the meeting rules of order and the qualifications of voters. A. Voting will take place by person on Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, at the Eldred Junior Senior High School in Eldred, New York. Closing of vote is at 9:00 p.m. Qualifications for voting must be a citizen of the United States, must be 18 years of age or over, must be a resident of the school district for 30 days or more preceding date of the vote. The custodian inspector, along with the district clerk of the vote, will oversee the voting. The custodian inspectors will verify all hand-counted results of the voting. Notice it is hereby given that the public hearing of the qualified voters of the Eldred Central School District, a school district of the state of New York located in the counties of Orange and Sullivan, held at Eldred Central Junior Senior High School in Eldred Central School District on May 9, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. For the presentation of the proposed budget for the following school year, the budget will be available for review no later than May 7, 2024, and thereafter at both school buildings and the school district office. Notice is further given that the annual meeting of the qualified voters of the school district will be held at the Eldred Junior Senior High School, Eldred, New York, on May 21, 2024, closing at 9:00 p.m. Shall the following resolution be adopted, too? Resolve that the annual budget of the Eldred Central School District for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 is hereby adopted, and the requisite portion thereof to be raised by taxation on the taxable property of the school district is hereby authorized $19,815,851 levy tax thereof. I said that right, right? Shall the following resolution be adopted? Resolve that the Board of Education of the Eldred Central School District is hereby authorized to levy taxes annual in the amount of $38,000 for the fiscal year 2024, 2025, and to pay over such monies to the Board of Trustees of the Sunshine Hall Free Library. Election of the Board of Education members, the qualified voters of the Eldred School District, are authorized to elect one candidate as a member of the Board of Education to serve a four-year term, beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30, 2028. Voters may select one candidate or submit a name on the line for a write-in on the ballot. All good? Okay. I missed old business and new business, obviously. Any old business that come before the board? Any new? Awesome. Public comment on anybody that wants to talk about something. All good? Good. Announcements. Next meeting will be held at Junior Senior High School on Tuesday, May 21, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. through 9:00 p.m. The annual budget vote and school board election certification of the election after all ballots have been counted. We have no reason to go into executive session? Anybody have a reason to? All good. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Stacy.
I'll second.
Second by Nancy. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.